It is seven o'clock and I will call the school board meeting to order on the Monday, January 8th, 2018. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Mrs. Mayor.
I'd be happy to. Kate Mayer, I'm here. Lisa Collins?
Here.
Rebecca Reber?
Here.
Gary Dunlap?
Here.
Tom Cruise?
He's excused.
Andrew Faff?
Here.
Cheryl Hancock?
Here.
And Anita Shekkosinski?
Here.
Okay, so with seven of the, or six of the seven school board members present, I would declare a quorum, approval of the agenda. I would note that the agenda was published, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to the agenda at this time? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second, okay. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please designate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay. Public participation. I would note that we have a card from Kristin Elson to speak under public participation. So if she would like to come forward to the table here, and she is going to speak to substitute teacher pay.
Hi, my name is Kristin Elson. Thank you.
Kristin, if you want to have a seat at the table too, that works.
Do I need? You don't need that.
There's a microphone there.
Yeah. My name is Kristin Elson. I am a parent of three students in the Holman School District. I am also a sub. I've been a sub in the Holman School District and surrounding districts since 2013. The reason that I'm here tonight is to present to the board a comparison data of sub pay for substitute teachers. As you can see from the document that I have presented to the board, Holman School District continues to fall behind in substitute teacher pay to other districts. With the districts that I have listed there, we are the second lowest district. And considering our size, the number of students we have, and the need for substitute teachers, I think that that needs to be addressed. I know I have talked to Melissa Kates at the district office, and she has said that that is to be, a change is to be proposed, I believe, in the summer. I'm asking the board to consider possibly looking at making a change during the school year. As you can see, both Onalaska and G E T have taken the time to increase their pay during the school year. Onalaska increased their pay in January of last year. G E T just increased their pay. So now they are the second highest of the districts that I've listed. I feel like with the amount of subs that we need, we are not doing our job to try to pull the substitutes that, I mean, in three weeks, we're going to have students who are finishing their student teaching that are going to be joining the pool of substitute teachers, most likely. And without them knowing what is going on in our school, if they're not familiar with the Holman School District, I don't know what really, what incentive there is for them to come to Holman to sub when other districts are paying more, when their compensation is more. I know, as a sub in Holman, we have great schools, we have great kids. But if they haven't worked in our schools as a student teacher, then they're not going to know that. So the only incentive they know is then pay. And I don't, I mean, the difference is significant. So I'm just asking the board to possibly consider in the next few months whether or not that would be an option.
Okay. Thank you for your information. As is our practice, we don't usually respond to public participation because we haven't had any
Sure.
preparation to do so. But Dr. Mueller will respond to you, correspond with you directly, and then we may see other responses as well.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Okay. Then moving on to recognition and thank you, band presentation.
Yeah. The high school wind ensemble has been selected to perform at the National Band Association's Wisconsin Chapter State Band Directors Convention on January 20th at UW Eau Claire. Only two high school ensembles are invited to perform each year. So tonight, I am so excited to have with us Michelle Jensen, and she even has our multi-talented Grayden Neeson with her, who is one of our majors. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
For our band, with her to share about this great, and I want to congratulate them also for this great accomplishment.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Michelle Jensen. I'm the band director at the high school. And Dr. Mueller just told you everything.
Oh, I'm sorry. You can share again. I talked past.
That's awesome. I was able to, back in June, email Dr. Mueller and Mr. Bear with the exciting news that the National Band Association Wisconsin Chapter selected our wind ensemble to perform at the state convention. This is coming up in two weeks, and we are really, really working hard to prepare some really fine literature. They only, the committee only selects two high school ensembles to play, and I don't know how many applied. But this is kind of a goal that I had set for myself and for the students that I work with. It really raises the bar of excellence to put your students on a stage. You know, when they play for their parents, their parents love what they do, no matter what. These kids will be playing for a very discriminating audience of state band directors who know the literature, they know what they're supposed to hear. So it's, it's a little nerve-wracking for me, and we're all working really hard to make it our absolute best performance.
How many students are involved?
Fifty-six. Fifty-six, grades nine through 12. The wind ensemble is an auditioned group. In the fall, the students do a chair placement to designate whether they sit in our symphonic band or our wind ensemble. So it is 56 members, grades nine through 12.
Any other questions? Well, congratulations. You make us very proud. There's a number of things that you have this year with parade results and those sorts of things. But thank you for coming and sharing this information as the curricular part of what you do. I think it's really important to recognize that, too.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
One of, one of the really neat things, sorry, if I can continue for a minute, one of the very neat things that we have arranged for Friday evening is, in conjunction with this convention, they have an all-state high school band. So students from around the state are selected to come together and form an honor band. They've got a high school level band, a middle school level band, and a collegiate level band. But the director of the all-state high school band is a composer. His name is Brian Ballmages. And each of our groups learned and performed one of his pieces last year. And he's conducting the all-state high school group this year. And when I found that out, I kind of finagled a "I know you, who knows you, who knows you," and I finagled a workshop with him on Friday night.
Oh, wow.
So our kids will get a one-on-one with internationally-known composer, working with, with one of the pieces that he composed that we're playing on the concert.
Thank you.
The concert is Saturday, January 20th. It's at 11:00 a.m. up on the campus of UW Eau Claire in their, in their Fine Arts Center. So it's free and open to the public. You're all welcome to attend.
At 11:00 a.m.?
11:00 a.m.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Well, thank you.
That is so fantastic.
Yeah, that's very cool.
I'm, I'm just a band, you know.
A band geek.
Yes, I always say that. I mean that in the nicest possible way. My band is in my heart forever, and I lo, I just love hearing this. It's just, I know how hard you work.
Well, I think this is something that, that the kids will really take with them for a long time.
Yep, forever. And they'll remember that performance forever.
This caliber.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
I told her it's like the state tournaments of bands.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But it takes someone like yourself to really find those opportunities for our students, and we just want you to know how much we appreciate that. And the hard work of the students as well.
Absolutely.
Because their excellence is, is important to all of this. So thank you very much.
They're all working hard.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So shifting gears, one more recognition. We want to recognize our adult crossing guards this next week. As we know, January is a perfect time of year to recognize them because of the wonderful conditions they get to stand outside in. Especially this last week, they have less than ideal conditions for their, for their jobs. So if we could please take time this next week when we see them to thank them and for all they do, and, and for them keeping our students safe as they cross the streets and make their way to school. So that's what I have for our recognitions and thankings.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then moving on to reports and discussion. The first item is Empire Stadium rejuvenation. Project community members are going to speak to this. And Dr. Mueller?
Yeah. I would like to take this time to welcome our community members forward this evening. They are here to present to you about the Empire Stadium rejuvenation project campaign that they would like to share about. And what I would like to do is turn this over to Dave Justice. He's one of our community members. And thank him and everyone for being here this evening.
You got it. Thank you, Dr. Mueller. Can you hear me all right with this microphone?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you to all of you sitting up front for allowing us a little slice of your time tonight on your busy agenda. Again, my name is Dave Justice, and I'm excited to introduce to my team, and I'm excited to introduce our Empire Stadium rejuvenation campaign project with you all tonight. We have a lot of detail, but we're going to condense it and put it in together so we can get it done in a, a good timely fashion. And as of right now, without further ado, I'd like to introduce my team. So up, up is this guy right here. Most of you might know him.
My name is Mike Flurry. I am a graduate from Holman, 1999, with my wife, Sarah Muma-Flurry. She also graduated '99. I got four children in the Holman School District. I got a junior playing baseball and football. My daughter's basketball and soccer, and then my other two kids are in elementary and a 4K. So, and I guess, I don't know if any of you know, but about 15 years ago, I donated with help from some subcontractors. We donated $25,000 to the school district to hopefully someday build a wrestling and gymnastics room.
I'm Dan Anderson, also a graduate of Holman. Three kids, two have already gone through, two boys, Tyler and Steven, and Lindsay is a junior. Was asked to be a part of this. I've been involved in a lot of community things, and this is something I think the district needs to, to keep us competitive with everybody else.
My name is Brett Lewis. I got on this board through Dave. He's a neighbor of mine. So he contacted me and asked me to be a part of this, and I was honored to be involved. I am a proud Holman resident. I have a daughter that's a junior in high school. She's in that band, so, clarinet, awesome. And I have a son that's in sixth grade at the middle school in Holman.
All right. A couple others that couldn't make it tonight. Karen McCarthy, she's the owner of Moxie Salon. Apologize if she's going to be here. Very entrenched in the Holman community, both with her kids and her business. Has a freshman and a recent graduate from Holman High School. Aaron Youngberger is a CPA with JRM and Associates, Tax season. He's not here. I get that. No kids yet, but he loves Holman. And then to go back, I've got a daughter in band, junior, in high school, and I've got a freshman that's in every sport you can imagine. And then I've been at Park Bank for over 20 years now. So although I didn't graduate from here, I'm very engaged in this community. So moving forward, as you all know, you all sitting here know, I'm not presenting anything new to you. This was a referendum action that you all approved. But unfortunately, it didn't, it didn't pass. I think it was maybe around less than 90 votes that it didn't pass. So last summer, during my tenure as president of the Holman Area Foundation, and Dr. Mueller's on that foundation as well, she approached myself and the team and tried to put it together for the foundation to take on as a pet project, like the bike trail in the pit. Unfortunately, we hit another roadblock, and it didn't go through there again. So here we are. I think the big thing is we didn't lose anything, because what we did at that point, Aaron and I did a lot of homework. And a lot of that homework consisted of vetting the Rettler Corporation. We have Rick and Ross here, who will come up to bat here shortly. The big thing on that is we vetted some other school districts, and one being Waupaca. Some of you may know Greg Nien, if I pronounce that correctly. He was a psychologist here for 15 years. He had nothing but great things to say about these folks. In his email, "First rate and impeccable" came about. I also talked to, via email, a gentleman at Regis High School, who also knows other athletic directors with Cumberland and Cameron and Lake Mills, and had nothing but great things to say about these folks. So over 15 years, over 25 projects, smallest Stanley Boyd, up to Lawrence University and Northland University, these guys are dialed in. So we've done that vetting process on that. So the energy did continue, even though we didn't get what we wanted with the foundation. We continued to grow the team. We brought on, we got a little bigger and better. And thanks to Mike Flurry, he helped us with that initial contract fee to make this reality become more of a, or vision become more of a reality with those funds, so we could keep moving on with Rick and Ross. And here we are today. The one thing I can do is I can guarantee you when you leave tonight, I'll know each, each of you will undoubtedly see our passion, our enthusiasm we have for our community, and the safety of our kids. This presentation will give you a clear and confident understanding on how this project will get accomplished. So what we will do now is I'll introduce you to Rick and Ross Rettler, who will kind of take you to the nuts and bolts on what they do and how we're going to get this thing done.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rick Rettler with Ross. It's a pleasure to be here in front of the board tonight. We began our journey in September, working with Dave, members of his team in the community. And I will say, it's been, it's been a very rewarding experience. There's a few examples up there in front of you of, of what David mentioned, or just a few of our past projects. I began Rettler Corporation 29 years ago, and we've done about 50 synthetic turf projects overall, 25 of which have been through foundation or fundraising efforts. You can see Edgewood High School in the upper left, down in Milwaukee, Madison area. Stanley Boyd in the center in the upper middle area. That's Superior in the upper right. Lawrence University in Appleton, Wisconsin, the Banta Bowl, which we've totally redone two years ago, which was a national award-winning project, along with the Waupaca project that Dave just talked about. And then Cameron. It's so important to identify your project as being unique. And what's unique about this project is bringing community elements, the people of your community, working together with our team and the school district and the board to create an everlasting impression, but also working on your campus plan comprehensively. Dave?
Yes, sorry. I was so engaged on your speech there, Rick, so.
The big thing, and I will go quickly through these things, but it's the what, the when,
and the how. The what is, you know, what are we doing? And a lot of it, we'll get into a little bit more detail, but the big thing is the synthetic turf, the bleacher expansion to get us into more of the ballpark of what other districts have for seating capacity, and other amenity enhancements to the field and the whole area itself, including, you know, an updated press box, which Dan will tell you we entirely need. The when, what is the layout, the timeline, we'll get into that. What's this all take? How quick can we do it? And the how, and the efficient and effective way that we will get this done. So again, I'll kick it back to Rick and Ross here.
So the district has been reviewing, what are the things that are needed in terms of a broad-based, comprehensive plan that we'll show in a second. The synthetic turf of your football, soccer, community-based band and curriculum needs is something that came to the forefront. It is a community-based recreation opportunity for all in the community, not just the sports. So the synthetic turf was one of the major priorities we were asked to evaluate for you. The bleachers, at this time, are also going to be looked at in terms of increasing the numbers to make your facility, one in this region, in the western region of the state, able to host regional and sectional events, as well as upgrade the press box. And then what are some of the other associated amenities to this project that'll tie it back into the improvements that are currently made, being made in your new phased parking improvements, and things that have passed in your most recent referendum, so that this project is looked at as part of the bigger campus, and it all meets those needs and fits well together. You can see this, this is a plan that was developed by the district, by you, the board, members of your Buildings and Grounds Committee, and people in your community. And the Phase 1 project, which is down in the lower-left section of the project, is exactly where we would like to focus your attention this evening, and that is what our group is talking about, helping you as a community improve with the outside funding.
So can I just ask, so just to clarify, the proposal matches what was being recommended or what was being requested on the referendum question?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct. In fact, we use the identical language. And as you see, when we look at these improvements that we're talking about more specifically for you, for the board to review tonight, such as the field, the size of the field, the bleachers themselves, we use the analysis that was done in the referendum and the study prior to the referendum. So, yes. Russ?
All right. Thank you. Thank you. So as part of the plan, just to clarify the scope of work at this point, a new synthetic turf, football and soccer facility would be implemented. As part of the soccer facility, we actually looked at reconfiguring your existing field and re-centering it based on your existing track configuration. What we came to find was, as part of the current track, to get a full-length 360-foot-long field in your, in your current track configuration. You were not able to do that unless you, unless you actually realign the field to the north. So we have provided a full-size soccer field and, and football field as part of the synthetic turf project. The other additions as part of this is obviously the bleachers. On the west end of the facility, we are showing an addition of roughly 1,300 seats to bring your home side seating to roughly 2,500 seats. We are showing roughly 240 seats added to the visitor side, bringing you to roughly 1,000 seats, a total of 3,500 seats. What we're showing you right now is, is a study that you had done as part of the 2016 referendum that starts to show your current student population to number of seats in your stadium. And currently, you're at roughly 1.7 seats to, to one student. What we're proposing as part of 3,500 seats would bring you up to roughly three to one, putting you up in the upper third in comparison to other districts and schools. Some of the other exciting amenity upgrading, upgrades that you're looking to do as part of this project would be a new eight-foot walking path at the north end of the facility that would connect to both the visitors' and home grandstands from a new and upgraded entryway at the northeast corner. This would provide access to your new parking facility as part of your Phase 2 project that has already been accepted and will be implemented this coming, this coming summer. So what you're showing here is just an example of what that overhead entry could look like, and examples of different places, Stanley Boyd, Cumberland, Cameron, and Superior. And really, what this is, is a great opportunity to, to highlight and celebrate entry into your facility, but it also provides an excellent option for donor or naming rights as part of the field.
Why is this our goal? It's, one of the biggest things is safety. Now, you know, over this weekend, there were some big concussions in football, and other sports, too. Concussions with the field, the turf field, it is, the concussion is supposed to go down. Now, Rettler can answer their questions more for you, but basically, if you go on any other field, it doesn't matter what sport is using it, if it's band, or if it's extra clubs. If it gets used over and over and again, the, the field gets a hole in it, right? They get stepped on, it gets wet. There's spots where kids can get injured, when they're either doing FIED, when they're doing any other kind of sport or extracurricular activities. So our goal is basically to make sure that we have something that is safe for the kids, something that's accessible to all clubs, which, like we said, banned. This is a great thing for banned, because now they can use it. It has stripes on it. They can work back and forth. There's also some spots for baseball and softball, they're called tags, where they can use these fields during spring, when we have snow. We can actually get the snow off the field, and they can use that for that, for those sports. So it can be used over many, many teams. And then finally, the equity and the cost, it's a, those are the other two things that we're looking at. Back to, Russ?
Okay. So this is exciting. This is Holman's information. We talk about community use. This project that we're describing this evening is really a community-based campus improvement plan that fits well within the district's goals and objectives. Very simply, when you look at those events on the left-hand side, you can see that when we talk about community things, that could be anything from people utilizing the field for Special Olympics, special kite-flying events, anything. We've seen a number of different types of uses under community events. But really, you do see athletics, you see band, you see FIED. It's a curriculum-based opportunity, so that the students in the community all can use this on a daily basis for PE or any other curriculum needs. And then we start talking about some of the outside sources for potential income generation. So these are the Holman numbers. These are very consistent with what we've seen throughout numerous projects in the Midwest, from Chicago on up through Wisconsin. You see about a seven-to-one ratio of use, okay? So you're seeing about 1,400 potential uses per year of hours versus about 211. And that's when the old grass just starts to wear out. So we'd like to say we could keep the grass in better condition, but typically, that's about what we're seeing. So those ratios are consistent with, with other projects. So it's good information for the board.
So I, I guess in looking at this, I see the PE, because we need to balance the extracurricular with the, the co-curricular with curricular classroom stuff. And the PE is 600. Well, we, that would be three times a day if you did it 190 days. So we know you're not using it in the middle of the, so you're almost, would be saying you'd be using that, because we only have three sections a day.
The other thing I'd like to clarify as part of these numbers, we worked specifically with your, your activities director to actually run through all the different numbers that...
Yeah, it just seems, some of them seem a little inflated, but. And Rough Riders, are we bringing Rough Riders to the school district? I didn't know that.
No.
They might contract out to you.
He's just being loud.
Be my guess.
So an organization like that could utilize the field?
Yeah, exactly. And I think that's through some of the things we worked with Rettler on, is just some of the different potential that's there, whether it's playoff games or, you know, other facilities have fields that get flooded or something to that effect. It gives you that opportunity to be able to potentially host games or playoff games. So yeah, I mean, that's what really all about here. We have, we have a facility that's sitting there that's not getting a lot of use, and we're looking to try to increase the number of use hours, and then also expand it, you know, whether it's athletics, including not just football, but soccer, baseball, all these different things we talked about that's written into the plan, but also non-athletic things, such as marching band, FIED, you know, the disability programs, things like that. It gives you that facility that doesn't, you know, flood or whatever it might be. So we're looking to take a great, you know, facility and make it even better.
All right. Thank you, Brett.
Now onto the important part, showing you the big dollar sign there. And I guess, how I would like to phrase it is we did it right from A to Z, making this number very achievable, and we're very confident in getting this done. And what I mean by that is we did the vetting, we did our homework, we contracted with the right group, and we have a good team. What a lot of that does not represent our in-kind dollars. In talking to Rick and Ross, there's a lot of in-kind dollars with a lot of local contractors. So we're excited about that. And what I mean from A to Z, the end part of it, the end game, crystal clear is that it's a one-and-done, the sustainability plan, basically coming to a cost-neutral for the school district itself. So the total capital campaign being 1.9, the actual cost to the district, nothing at this point except time and knowledge going back and forth and, and working with you folks, working with Jay and Dr. Mueller. Regarding the ongoing costs, the sustainability plan is what I call it. It is, it is cost-neutral, so to speak, and Jay could talk to that for hours on that, because I've listened to him quite a bit about that. And the big thing is, you know, going forward, that is a sustainability plan. After this, it is on the district to keep this going. So once we raise these funds, you know, we're done and we're ready to go. So we're excited about that. And then to successfully raise this, we've got a lot of ideas rolling, kind of waiting for you folks to, to let us get the boots on the ground, so to speak, so we can...
so we can kind of give you some final statistics on how we're going to achieve some of these goals. And that would take us to this next slide Dr. Mueller has up for you. We've got a lot of opportunities ahead of us. You've got to believe what they say. They've done it. They've done it for smaller school districts than ours. We have a lot of good people in the area. We've got a lot of good businesses in the area, and we're excited to get out there and attack them. Campaign strategies could, you know, obviously include the naming rights on the field for local businesses, naming rights on maybe the track, maybe the bleachers. And then, the big thing is the donation commitments over multiple periods of years. A lot of corporations can't give you that big chunk of money. They're going to need some help over maybe a three-to-five-year period. That's where you, the district, might have to help come in and finance some of that, and that's very common in this, from what I've been learning. And all the above, so to speak, if the advertising privileges come about, the naming rights, and this commitment for the financial, over a three-to-five-year term, that's all going to come to you. You're going to pre-approve all this. So it's not like we're going to take this thing and run, and all of a sudden, we have a field full of 5,000 logos out there. We're not doing that. We're going to make it look nice, and we're going to keep it in your hands, so you make all the actual calls on this. So, it's not like we're taking it and running that way, so... During the campaign, we're on this slide now, we'd like to utilize the Holman Area Foundation. They're a good source to be a conduit for this, instead of creating our own 501(c)(3), which is very expensive, and getting this thing done, and, you know, as quick as we want to do it, it doesn't make sense. We'd rather have a group of folks that are geared up to take this and do it right, and get the tax-exempt receipts and so forth out there. Having all the funds distributed back to the district to pay the contractors and so forth. They do charge a fee, it's capped at 1%, anything over 30,000. I've talked to Mark Provisek a few times, he's the current president of the foundation, and obviously, they're going to work with us on that, in the sense that the foundation gives right back to the school and the community. So, I could see, you know, if we did rack up a few fees, because it's not cheap to do that stuff on the foundation's end because of the audits and the IRS and all that good stuff, and the postage and the time and the handling, they're going to give some of those proceeds back. So it's a win-win for both, I think, in that regards. And it, you know, it may cost, it may be necessary for you guys to cover some of this cash if a big company wants to give over a three- or five-year period. And we will meet regularly with Dr. Mueller and Jay and you folks as you see fit. So, we're excited in that angle. So, is this the time where we pass the hat around? I'm kidding. This is the when, you know, we'd like to... I mean, I've been on this with Dr. Mueller since last summer, and I've been excited from day one, being on the foundation. I'd like to get boots on the ground as fast as we can. We've got a great team, they're ready to go. We've got a great... The Rettler guys are great to work with. We'd like to get rolling, and hopefully in the next 30 days or sooner. And our goal is to have this done by the fall of 2018, so it's quick and fast. And we're excited, and we're very confident that we can do that. And, you know, it's up to us, but we've done the homework, and we're excited to move forward. So I'll pass it on to Mr. Rettler.
Thanks Dave. What's important here is that the board has input through the entire process. And as Dave has just pointed out, if you look at what steps remain when the fundraising occurs, how does this really work for the school district and the board? Typically, what we've seen is there's a contract that has to be entered into, in terms of design and engineering. At that point, once that contract is entered into, the final plans, construction documents, permitting, and the actual project bidding is done with all local contracting community members. What we typically like to see, at least through our group, is we typically like to see as many local people bidding on the project. When that happens, in the bid documents themselves, there's an opportunity where each company has to bid apples-to-apples on specific specifications, which you can understand on any of your building projects. However, within that opportunity, they bid a number, but they then can roll back in a donation after they bid the original number. And the reason for that is, we typically like to see local contracting community members have that opportunity, okay? Then, what happens is the board has to approve the original contract to hire the firm. Then, they have to review the bids. So you then have to authorize, after the bids are brought back to the school district, the board has to authorize that construction process. That is not necessarily required at that point, obviously. As you know, as board members, you have the right to reject any and all those bids. And then, once the project starts, we would typically see this process probably about three to three-and-a-half months from the time the contract design starts through bidding. And then at that time, we would also like to see the project get into construction immediately after what we would say track season, and if that's feasible through fundraising, where we would then have the project ready for fall activities. Fall activities, okay? Any questions?
So are you saying that the design work would be done at the same time that you're fundraising?
It's a great question. A lot of times, we do see that, where there's enough money that's brought in that will cover design services, so the project gets rolling. But it still has to be authorized through the board on those other steps. Once the design is done, the board has to still review the plans and bids before the contracts are let. So, a lot of times, to get the project rolling and to bid it at frankly, one of the best times of the year, you know, when it's a little chilly out before the contracting community gets too busy, we'd like to see that opportunity for you. And many times, we do see savings because of that timing of the bidding, okay? Does that answer the question? Okay.
So I have... Any other board members have questions?
I guess when you talked about the $1.9 million cost being fundraised, and that's fantastic. And then you talked about the cost to sustain. Do you have an estimate? What would be your estimate to sustain this over time?
The sustaining number that we talked about on this project means that currently, the school district has a grass facility that they're maintaining. Fertilizing, cutting, striping, watering. When you compare a synthetic system out there that we've typically seen, when the project is bid, the equipment that is required to maintain the synthetic system is part of the bid document. So, the machines that go out and actually, you know, keep the rubber, if you will, or whatever, everything level, that's all part of your construction project. They utilize that equipment when they come in to construct your project. It's left here, but it's also used to train the staff. So, dollar-for-dollar, what we're seeing, the sustainability is typically about a wash. And I don't want to say it too loud, but sometimes we see synthetic a little less than it would be for the longer-term turf management. But that, I think, is the definition that we've alluded to as the sustainable cost for the district.
Okay, thank you. And when we went to referendum, I think we were willing to assume that... And I don't think the referendum question had built-in maintenance to it, correct? It did not, or it did?
Did not.
Did not?
It did not.
Other questions? So in looking at the... I have a couple. Hopefully, on January 20-something, I'll be announcing the end of our capital campaign at Cooley. So, this is like the life I've been living these last few months. So, the 1.9 is the goal, or is that the cost of the project? It includes your fee, it includes your fee?
$1.9 million includes everything that we had talked about as part of the scope of work, including a press box as well, a relocated press box. And it also includes soft costs like our fees for, you know, design, bidding, permitting, layout, staking, testing, and observation as well during construction.
And so your fee isn't based on a percentage raised, it's not done to that, it's a flat fee kind of thing?
Correct.
Good. And then, as far as uncollectible, I know that's one of the things that we have been working with where I work, is our accountant is telling us to expect a 5% to 7% to 8% uncollectible with the audits and that sort of thing. And we are kind of resisting that a little bit because of the nature of our donors. But, is that kind of the level? Do you have an uncollectible built into that?
Okay, so my experience has been based on being on board of directors for medical foundations personally. And what we typically would see is probably a 3% to 5% non-collectable ratio. But what we have typically seen are businesses that made over a period of time, frankly, not be available anymore. But, on typically, these projects typically, we've not seen, we've not seen a very large recurrent non-payment on... Community-based people typically are pretty good.
Yeah, I was surprised by that number too, but... And I know you mentioned the Holman Foundation. And the school district has a community fund, though. Is that a viable option to utilize that community fund instead of having to acquire that fee that we actually could maybe... Jay Clark is coming forward that way.
Yeah, because that goes into... And I'll let Jay speak to it in detail. But, when you start using the community fund, that has effects on other parts of our tax levy.
We have used in the past, community service, but very limited basis. Remember, it was when we had some 4K program services that we needed to provide. So we've not done that. We could explore that if there's advantages to it. Honestly, I don't think we can process the payments any better than the Holman Area Foundation can. And so, we're avoiding that cost of administering that. I think that Rick and Ross had talked about the confidence that a business would have with the Holman Area Foundation, actually being the recipient of that. And I think it also brings a little life in, more life, into the Holman Area Foundation. It makes them feel like a valuable part of this as well. So, from the start, Dr. Mueller's been talking to people about partnerships. And so having the Holman Area Foundation involved just adds one more partner to the process. Probably doing it as well as we could process it here.
Oh yeah, I guess, you know, as past president of the foundation, I was one of those who encouraged them to do something with a fee, because we couldn't afford to continue to sustain that. And then, in the position paper, it talked about naming opportunities for the field, that the field may be named. And, you know, we've talked about that a little bit as a board. I'm not sure how receptive we are as a board to have the Pepsi Field inside Empire Stadium, or to even put that, you know, to have a Ford logo in the middle of our football field. And I noticed, you know, the ones that you showed us didn't have that. They were all the school-based ones, so I was glad to see those. But, I think as a board, we've kind of, you know, that recognition thing, usually a naming like that would take a million of a $1.9 million goal. So, we might be more willing to talk about it if we're talking about a donor at a million. But, this, I think, is very appealing to us, and... But, I don't know if you want to get, you know, like, I think one of the community members said, "You don't want to have 5,000 logos on that field either."
Do we have the planner?
Yes, okay. So... Somebody comes to you with a million dollars to the board, or to the community, which we have seen on a couple of projects, alright?
Well, that's why it's called Empire. That is a naming opportunity.
So, that's a tough question, but the reality is that typically, on these projects, it might be a little hard to see, but we did show some boxes, very small, in the field for some logo opportunities, which normally, on these projects, like, if you looked, it's hard to see on those examples, and it wasn't intended to not show them, but we do not have fields that are overly cosmetic in terms of support through donation. We do have one in particular that was fundraised in six weeks at a level of about $1,003,000, that we were asked to perform services on. It's a little busy, okay, but it's not typically what we've seen. And so, the board has to make certain that if the foundation and the community comes back, and there's a donor of choice, and it's a large enough contribution, there may be opportunities for certain things at Empire Stadium, okay? That's typically what we have seen, is there's another, a name that might be associated with Empire Stadium. But, those asks are very significant. I'll just leave it at that, okay?
So do you have a strategy then for naming opportunities that...
Yes.
Yeah, the community group, one thing that I think just shows you another reason our community is outstanding like it is, is they wanted to come to you as a board and say, "This is what we really want to do. This is something that I know that we saw the school district approach and was very close to being successful at. But you know what? We want to see this in our community, that we want to take this on, and this really helps us out as a district to move forward to other projects that we do, would like to move forward also, and see what we can do, because we want to get Phase 1 completed. And if they do are able to do it within their timeline, Phase 1 and Phase 2 could even happen almost simultaneously, even saving us more dollars in doing possibly the Phase 2 project." So, I just, they want to make sure that you're okay, and that you would have their blessing to move forward with it before they even go and ask any donors, and have conversation with them. So, what you'll notice in the paper is, it's for consent at our January 22nd meeting, so you have more time to review and see if there's anything else that you would think you would like to have them come back and do status reports on, or us to do reports on even, and have approval on. But, really, what they would, what would be the ideal situation is that they would get your blessing tonight, so that they could actually start to go out and not, and get started right away, so that they could hopefully accomplish their timeline with their project, and then formally have it consented with any other details that you would see necessary at the January 22nd board meeting. Any other questions or comments?
Questions? So, they would be going out and representing the school district on behalf, they would be making the asks on behalf of the school district?
I guess that's the way we would look at it, yes. They would be going out and saying that they're doing a campaign. They have a fundraising campaign, because they have, they would like to rejuvenate the Empire Stadium, and this is what their project consists of, and they would be asking for dollars to support, basically to support the school district, yes. So, it's kind of a three-legs duel is what we talk about. We have our community, the district, and then, what makes this kind of unique is with Rettler, having been professional fundraisers and also worked on projects can bring success to it.
So I think the only thing, my only reservation is what would our risk be? So if we gave a gentle consensus tonight to move forward, and then the formal approval at the next meeting, you know, fundraising can be, it can be, yeah, it can be just weird. And if they aren't able to raise those dollars, there's going to be initial costs upfront that we would be committed to, that they may not raise to cover. I mean, we've seen other organizations that have had issues with raising the dollars they needed.
Right. They would always come to the board to get approval if that was that reoccurring, or over a extended period of time before we would approve that.
So it sounded like the design would be the...
We'd have to come back, each step that we showed on that little chart for you tonight, that, so that it's for the board and the community to be able to take those steps that they're comfortable with to award design, then, through bidding, prior to award contract. So, to make that a little easier for logistics, fundraising, step-by-step, you know, so the risk of the board would be able to manage through the process to ask those very specific questions, where are we? Where are we with this at each step along the way? Instead of just like, you know, being compromised at the end of a process. That would never be acceptable in any one of our minds, so, okay?
So I'm seeing heads nodding yes, you know, we can't take a vote, we can't do that kind of thing. But I think certainly you have answered my questions and I'm happy. I told Chris, Dr. Mueller, that I would have some questions. And I'm happy that you were able to respond to those and answer those. I feel much better with the responses that we've received, so I think there's a.
If Flurry's in, I'm in.
So, okay, well, thank you. And other questions may come up between now and the next meeting. And so board members can feel free to reach out to Dr. Mueller to request any information and those sorts of things. Yes, and then I think what usually happens is the administration will review, analyze, and make a recommendation for us on, on their, I guess their recommendation for us to move forward too, so. So thank you very much, and thank you for.
Thank you.
Your role in all of this, the community folks, we especially appreciate the, the time that you've taken to do this. So thank you very much. Okay, then.
Now your work starts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So then the two-stage entry report, Dr. Mueller.
Yes.
John Daly and Doug Ramsey. Is Doug coming? Yeah, but your name is on here, John.
Why, I didn't need to show up tonight, though? Here, I'll leave these here.
Alright, I'm gonna shoot from the hip here. I'll start.
Okay.
And then here, you can sit by me here or whatever.
Okay. So. This presentation is about a prod, it's an update. It's just a report, an update about our middle school and high school secure entrances. So I just want to remind everyone how we actually got to this point in that. Actually, back in December of 2015, we had an external professionals. They were called the Wisconsin School Safety Coordinator Association, come in and do an assessment of our district on our security and safety, which led to our district's safety committee completing an analysis of the recommendations and the assessments, which was then presented to the board in July of 2016. And the board then advanced that to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. And then the Buildings and Grounds, and actually the board, when they had brought that to the Buildings and Grounds Committee, they said, can you come up with funding strategies to help figure out how we can fund some of the needs on our safety and security in the district? So then in December, the funding strategies were presented to the board. And the outcome of that was our April 4th of 2017 referendum. And therefore, which led to question number one on our referendum, which successfully passed. And part of that referendum was our two-stage entries. So that's how we got here today. Our process that we have done so far is our leadership team developed, and I, I remember it very vividly. Our building administrator sat down in the room here and we're, we had to develop criteria. What was the criteria that we were going to follow in the development of these two-stage entries? Because our building administrators had some things that were very important to them and to, in their buildings, to run those smoothly. And then we also had commitments to our community to keep. So our criteria, um, some of the main criteria were to make sure it was a secure entrance, like we said in our referendum, that we did not lose any instructional space, because we need every inch we have. Try not to separate our office staff, so we'd have someone that would be alone in an area. That would, it would cause no need for additional staffing. We don't want to add additional cost to staffing. And we did not want to decrease our current office space in the plans that we would develop. Then our principals had the opportunity to go visit other schools and get some design feedback from staff, and in some cases, parents, through our PTOs. And then the last stage of our process is HSR has been very accommodating and patient with us in working with myself and our associate district administrator Jay Clark, and our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, John Daly, and the principals in going through designs and talking about improvements and more designs and more improvements and so on. And then we have gotten today to the designs, which I will turn over to Doug to talk about.
Thank you. Uh, once again, I'm Doug Ramsey from HSR, architect and project manager. So we're going to talk about the high school design current, which is up on your screen currently. On the left-hand side is an existing floor plan of just the, just a little bit of the office space. But you can see that, um, on the right-hand side is what we're talking about for the new space, a remodeled space as it is. So we're basically, everything in the pink is a very small addition to the high school, which is, as you'll see in a little bit, it's kind of filling in one of the overhang corners underneath the main entry as you would enter the school on your right. So, and everything in blue shown in here is a remodeled area. So basically, the arrows are pointing to how a visitor would come into the school to check in and then be issued into the rest of the building. So we would have a secure point outside of this new vestibule where the arrow is. So this is a new vestibule, and then they would be buzzed in to the check-in area, which there would be a person at the attendance counter. We have a, we actually have a room that we're creating, but it's all glass, so they can still see back into the office. So if there is something that's happening at that point, even though they've been checked through two different times, that there can be some assistance to that person. So there is a small area for some chairs for waiting. But basically, they come through here, get checked in at the attendance counter, and then out into the high school to do what they're doing in the school. Or they could come this way into the main office space. So in a nutshell, that's what that is. So in three-dimensional form, like I said, on the right-hand side, this is a small addition. We'll be matching the brick. The two different colors and three different shapes of the brick that are currently there have been told that it's still available, so that's a good thing. So when you're coming in under the overhang, um, the secure vestibule will be, the addition will be right there on your right-hand side, all glass. A little bit closer view, these are the existing doors that will remain. Nothing will change from those. But they'll be just, all visitors will be directed to this new doorway. Within the vestibule itself, um, you can see it's all glass into the, the waiting and check-in area. And then this is the check-in counter where someone will be manning that. This is the glass that will be back into, looking back into the office area. So basically, it's to the right is to the office, to the left is to the high school. This is just a look back from the check-in desk, looking back to the secure vestibule. Another shot is saying that these are the, this is the doorway to the high school, and this is back to where they came in from the secure vestibule. This is another shot, just showing the check-in desk and to the office. We're thinking about putting some graphics on the wall just to say welcome to the high school, you know, some, whether or not it has the, the Holman Viking symbol and the. Now looking at the middle school.
And can I just ask?
Yes.
So they would tend to exit through the other doors, which will be there. Like you said, they're not being removed, the current doors that are there, they're just going to be exit doors, correct?
Coming out of the.
Building.
Like this, this shot right here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Like those doors. Will those doors be able to be monitored so that if somebody's holding them open, that kind of thing? Are they doing anything with that?
With our new FOB system that will have, we, they have secure, they have sensors.
Door contacts.
Door contacts, thank you. And they actually already have them on. Thanks, John. Yeah, okay.
And you already have, how many cameras at the high school right now?
So at the start of the day, they'll go into the multiple doors also?
Yeah. It's secured once school starts. School hours is when it's secured and people enter through the vestibule. Yeah, we won't want to do that when there's a game going on in the evening. It may take a while for everyone to get in.
So those doors will be accessible during games and things like that? Is this is really just during the school day?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
So the middle school project was not as easy as the high school because of the way that somebody designed this addition like 10 years ago or something. Didn't think about that, I guess, school security.
Was it needed?
We basically ended up kind of doing a flip-flop of the items on the right-hand side, the computer space, with, with a majority of the space that's the office area. And it actually worked out pretty well. And Ryan challenged me on design and Jay did. And I think in the end, it's coming out to be a very nice project with some great usable space. So this is a slide of the existing condition currently at the middle school. So currently, these are the doors off of Main Street that you come in. And then since everybody always asks me why we have this vestibule, but it's basically exiting the basement, the second floor, and quite a bit of the auditorium occupants out of the building. So it is a fire-rated enclosure. And there's a lot of stuff going on with code issues.
So now we know that answer.
Yep.
I've always wondered that.
So this is the new plan. So I'll flip back, so this is existing. This is new. So we took the computer classroom on the right-hand side and put it in this space and overtook kind of the main office area and a few of the offices. We created a smaller conference room on the corner. And we're still keeping this existing entry. We're keeping quite a, two of the main windows that were into the office. There'll be windows into the computer lab. And the other window, we're creating a doorway into the new computer lab. So on the right-hand side, we've, out of this existing space, we're actually going to be filling in that, that's a ramped floor system. That, so it goes down and then it tears up again. So we're going to be filling that in, so it's all flat. But up here by the, the main vestibule, we're creating a smaller kind of secure vestibule, just like at the high school where during school hours, visitors will be directed to this entrance to get buzzed into this vestibule and then buzzed into the, the waiting area. So this is kind of the reception, check-in counter right here. And behind that is a large copy and work area for the entire office. And then below that is the attendance desk. So this is all open in here, even the copy work. So we have two desks, one is check-in, one is attendance. If you have an issue with your student or a student comes in and they're checking in for the day because they were at a dental appointment or something.
And are those doors, the, either at the high school or this door? Right now, like in some of the buildings, you have to buzz, take, at the camera, you have to buzz to get in? Will those be just open? Or will you have to buzz to get into that initial vestibule?
You'll have to buzz to get in, so it's a two-stage entry.
So that's the first stage, is the buzzing to get in, and then this is the second stage?
Yes. So we have, um, in the existing space, we have an office on the top here. We have the principal's office here, we have another office here, and another office over here. And then below the attendance, there is a study area with carols in it for individualized study for students who are in need of that type of supervision or things like that. Below that, uh, we have a records room, which is right down here. And then the data elevator and the toilet over here are actually existing spaces. And then we'll have a small, smaller copy area back here. And there still will be a back entrance into the office that's an existing entrance to the Title I space right now. So the Title I space that used to be here is now going to be over in this space over here, which is, I think.
It's, um, Anita and Jake, Anita, so it's our information.
Okay.
Infinite campus, middle school person.
But in the existing office, the nursing, the nurses' area remains the same. The conference room back here remains the same. And these offices or small group areas remain the same, along with the toilet for the nursing area.
So we actually gain, if I'm speaking correctly, we gained some small group space, which is great when we're talking about working with interventions with students and having that extra space, so.
So once again, the flow would be from outside, buzz into this vestibule, get into the waiting check-in area here, and then proceed back out to the school here, which then you go through this vestibule and then out into the school or this way around. Some quick three Ds, so similar, this is standing on the outside. These are, these are actually the existing doors. So the pair on the left-hand side will be the secure entry doors. One other thing, we're actually making this window over here a little bit wider, just so we can have more vision to the outside. It will be the same window design as to the right-hand side of the existing entrance along that corridor leading to the cafeteria. This is within the secure vestibule, looking into the office and then looking out into the fire vestibule. I'm now in the office area. So this is our kind of check-in desk, and here's the attendance desk. And here's the mail and copy area behind them. I'm now looking from the secure check-in area back to the secure vestibule and to the outside, so I can see who's coming and going. These existing windows are actually here right now. I'm looking kind of back, I'm going to go back towards Ryan's office maybe. So I'm looking back to the secure vestibule. Here's the check-in desk, here's the attendance desk, and here's the door that'll get back out to the middle school. Uh, once again, here's the attendance desk, and I'm going back out to the middle school after I've checked in. Uh, I'm now in the fire-rated vestibule, looking at our glass box secure vestibule. So these are the people that are transitioning within the space. The girl in the green jacket, she's waiting to get buzzed into the office. This is a view from the hallway space into the fire-rated vestibule. And then beyond that, the secure vestibule. This is a view that would have been into the old office area, but now it's into the, the remodeled computer space. So this is the new door into the computer classroom. And this is a view of the new computer classroom. Are there any questions on the middle school design?
Any questions?
So then like the, um, the high school, then the entrances will be locked at, during classroom time?
Yes.
It just seems to me that the middle school has so many more student entrances. It used to, I don't know if it still does. Student entrances in it than the high school does. Does it still have it? Right there.
Is there still an entrance over here for students?
So that will be locked. Before school, before the school day, they call it doré in that, and they, or, and they come in where the buses pull around on the east side of the building in that?
South side.
Or south, is it south side? I, sorry, south side of the building. Get myself bearing straight. And so that, those are, everything, as soon as the school day starts, everything is locked now. And they have the door locks, is that what you call them, right? Correct, John?
The door locks and, and door contacts.
And door contacts.
Whether they're open or not.
Yeah, so soon, if, if it's open for a certain period of time, then something is alarmed. And then they know to, they have a protocol that they follow to make sure that someone checks and they.
So students will still enter where they're entering now?
Yep.
To get off the bus, but as soon as the school day.
Starts, they have to come in that front.
Main street side.
Yep.
This design is no different than what we're doing now. Parents have to come to the office, have to use entrance. Deep, is that what that is? Yeah, new entrance need to come in, become their children. Or visitors have to come in deep.
And the idea of this two-step is a safety. It's been, evidence shows that this is more secure than just the one entry locked. The buzzing of the camera kind of thing, this still provides an extra layer. The buzzing of the camera kind of thing. This still provides an extra layer.
Yeah, exactly.
The key to this is that they actually have to come face-to-face with somebody before they get into the building. Now, with the way it is currently.
Right.
It buzzes and they can just zip down the hall and not see anybody. That's the reason for the changes and bringing people in differently and having to move the office around.
I think too in the high school, they can just go off to the left once they get in the doors and past the, the person. So.
Okay. Any other questions on either of the designs? Okay, now to budget. So as, as you can see here, the, our home and high school referendum projected budget was one eighty-nine, nine ninety-two. And it came in at two forty-two. So it came in over fifty-two thousand dollars, fifty-three almost. And our home and middle school came in about seventy, sixty-seven thousand over. So a total of, currently over budget, about a hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. I just, this is based on an estimated cost. You know, this could be more or less. Bids will determine this. The good news is, the estimated budget over, we, our security camera and FOB systems actually came in under budget. So they came in under about sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. So we actually, we want to remember that the referendum question provides a total amount of two million, eight hundred and forty-eight, two hundred and three thousand. So in the schemes of things, we have many projects that are coming in under budget in that. And we have a few that are coming in a little over. But in the scheme of things, we feel that we're doing pretty good. Right now, our status is pretty good with our referendum budget at this point in time.
So are you saying then that we have, of what we had estimated are, the cost of what we've done or completed, we are seeing a sixty-six, sixty-eight thousand dollar to the good?
Yep. Correct.
But there's no guarantee that we'll continue to see that?
So we're, so we have two point eight, a little over two point eight million for the two years. And we, our, our larger, our middle school and high school are our first two project buildings. And right now, the security cameras, what we're finding, those and the FOB systems have been coming in quite a bit under. And our two-stage entries have been a little bit more than our estimated projection. So it's balancing out pretty well so far in that. So we're going to keep a close eye on it as we move forward in our projects this upcoming year and that. And if we have to come up with other funding strategies, we'll have to look at that and, and, and come up with those.
So it's really the elementary schools that?
Yep. We'll have the elementary schools.
How much of the two point eight have we spent or?
I do not have that number with me, on me.
You don't have to have it today. But yeah, I'd be curious to know what, so if we are at
Right.
Fifty percent or twenty percent of our total budget, you know, there's a little bit difference between us being closer to being through it. So.
Yep. Okay. I can give you those details. We do have a running spreadsheet with the details on that. So been watching it closely. Okay, John, do, come, come join us. I'm going to let you and Doug finish up with your timeline here.
Okay.
So we have a new strategy we've been using. Green means that these are things we've actually got done. And yellow is what, what's in progress and red is what's to come. So I'll let you two talk to each other about it. Thank you.
All right. So I get to come up here on the last slide. Thank you.
All right.
Should have been up there the whole time.
So we, I, I and, actually Lish, Lish Olson really helped me with this. They developed, initially developed a timeline and then shared with Doug what the timeline, what we thought the timeline would need to be to try to have these projects done by the time school started in the fall of two thousand and eighteen. And, and you can see here, we developed a criteria back in October and then started going to our principals and talking about design. Visiting other schools. I know Ryan looked at some, some, some places. And then recently, we've been meeting extends, quite a bit with HSR and the design development of this. And as Doug said, Vogler really did challenge him on that one. So. So we're hoping to have. I guess you can talk about your, your design timeline. I know you want to get things pretty well squared down by next week.
Yep. So we're continuing, we're developing our, our construction documents for bidding. Even though it says February two thousand and eighteen, our state appointment for review is March sixth or something like that. So it's pretty close to February. So on that same day, March sixth, that's when we're planning to release the documents for bidding. So that early March two thousand and eighteen is correct. And in, I think we're giving them like three weeks to bid. So it'd be late March, like this says, for the board to approve those bids. And then.
And then we'll, then we'll begin the project soon as school is out. And hopefully, again, have it completed by mid-August.
Questions? Thank you.
And then we'll start working on the elementary two-stage.
Yep. Work never ends.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know I have been asked a couple of questions, so I really appreciate the update so that when community members ask, we can give them information. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, then eight point three anticipated spaces for open enrollment. I would just note that that item is not on the consent agenda this evening. And as he indicated, we'll be coming back in March with the bid docs.
So this is just the issue paper. Every January, we need to come to the board and talk to you about open enrollment for the following school year. So these are the projections and the anticipated slots open for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Let's see, here we go. Okay. And so we do not usually cap numbers at the four K level and at the middle and high school level. But we do need to look at them, four K through five. And so we always look at our class size guidelines. We look at the projections. So for kindergarten and four K, I use the projections that come from Jay. And I use the ones from the board presentation in October. And then the rest of them I roll over. Our district registrar creates the projection rollover for the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year. And so that's where the following numbers come from. We look at current number of classes or sections. And then we look at the, the projections and we look at sections that are going to be needed. And so it looks like we may have an anticipated need of two additional sections. Or two additional, yeah, two additional sections for next year. And then looking at eight slots in kindergarten, fourteen in first grade, twenty in second grade, two in third grade. So we're really going to have to watch that one really closely. Twenty-one in fourth grade and sixteen in fifth grade. So we're going to need to really watch K and third grade for open enrollment requests.
And if they make a request to a, a certain elementary, but because of enrollment currently there, we don't automatically just grant it, correct?
No, actually, they can open enroll. They can request a school. But it's our job to look at whether the school has room and space. So just because we have eight seats open doesn't mean that Sand Lake has eight seats open. They may have none. And so we would have to decline their request for Sand Lake. And, and I had to do that last year when I came on board and allowed someone, you can move to the other schools, but you, you can't move to Sand Lake. So. And then the other piece of this too, we're not capping numbers for special education right now for a couple of reasons. One, because after next year, the rule is going back how it was before. And so instead of determining caps, you will go back to giving estimates for how much it would cost for the student to come. So it's kind of going back to what it was like, I think, four years ago. So we thought, if you're going to do all that work for one year, I don't know if it's worth it. So the one thing we did write in here though is if we have people requesting their student come, that has significant amount of additional adult support or EA support, we would really have to look at that before we would accept it because of that increase in staffing. So. Any questions about?
Any questions?
The one thing I want to add though too is if we receive requests after the next January board meeting and prior to the open enrollment period, we are not able to accept those open enrollments for these particular grade levels because we put caps on them. We could accept them and put them on a waitlist for next year, but we can't accept them after, after determining this in January, just so you know.
All right. Thank you. And that will be on the agenda on the twenty-second. So the next is educational options. It is our Act fifty-five notice.
You just open up and I can talk from here. It's, it was right next to yours on there already. Just the top left there. Perfect. Thank you. According to the Wisconsin statute one eighteen point five seven, by January thirty-first of each year, we need to identify or publish, I should say, all of our educational options we offer through our school district to Holman and also publish our accountability report card information. So we, we actually will publish this in the Courier, our local newspaper. And then we also have it available on our district website. So as you can see on the screen in front of you, we list all of our different options from our virtual to our enroll, open enrollment options, to our youth options, course options, advanced placement, home-based private education. And then we also have on there all of our accountability scores from our school report cards available. So all that is available on our district website and will be published in the Courier on January nineteenth. So thank you.
Thank you.
And that is for consent at the next board meeting.
Okay, wonderful. So then that does take us to the consent agenda. We have eight items this evening. Are there any items that you would like to have removed and considered separately? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as published. Okay, Anita and Gary seconded. Any discussion? Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda items as published.
Yeah.
Dr. Mueller has a comment.
Yeah. And it's that time of year where we do get some retirements in our district. So I want to make sure that, I got so excited up here tonight. I'm wrecking my microphone. Sorry. That I want to make sure we recognize some of our, our employees that are so dedicated to our staff. Tracy Sasha, she's been an educational assistant at Sand Lake and has been with us since two thousand and one. She is going to be retiring at the end of this year. And then we have a second grade teacher at Sand Lake, Sue, or Susan Torres. She started with the district thirty-five years ago. I'm always just so astounded as to all the years of service that they provide. And then we have Colleen Clary. She's been in our print shop for years. Thirty-six years in the district and she'll be retiring in the end of August. And then this one, Becky Forrester. She has been a mainstay over there at Evergreen. Rachel's like, yeah. She's, I don't know if you can guess how many years she's been with the district, but longer than any of us sitting here, especially me. Forty-two years. Yeah. So I know we've looked to her for lots. And even myself, when I got here, I'd call her and ask her, tell me a little bit about this. So, you know, all this, this experience and years and all the, has been so helpful for many of us coming in. And that's, we just want to thank them for all their service and time in the district. So, thank you.
Thank you. So a motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda items, including the personnel report as published. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Then I will call on board members to do any committee reports that they may have or any comments that they'd like to reinforce. Let me turn my page. I'm doing it the old-fashioned way today with a print. I have to get my iPad tomorrow. Kate Mayer, did you have any comments?
I'm just to brief on, on student achievement and learning committee. One thing that I just want to mention is I know that grading policy is on there. And we did discuss this again at the last meeting. But just a heads up that this is going to, this is a very long-term subject and we've mentioned that before. But just a very initial phases, and I'm, I'm just pleased with everything that's been put together with the timeline. I think the months will be adjusted as to when things might be finished. But input, input, input is all upfront and that's really, really good for our staff to hear. So that's going along as input comes in and, you know, we'll just get closer to that. But it's a, it's a hard thing to do. It's a really hard thing to do. But just pleased with how Holman's doing this, you know, making sure that the, the end product really is state-of-the-art.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. Lisa Collins?
I don't really have anything to add, other than we've got a committee coming, a committee meeting for finance committee meeting coming up on January twenty-second. I think that's about all I have. I don't really have a whole lot extra.
Thank you. Rebecca Reber?
I don't have anything for building and grounds, unless Gary does.
Well, Gary's up next.
I'd like to give shout-out to the DECA group. They advanced a whole bunch of kids to the next level. They're doing really well. The wrestling team, they're rated number one in the state. They're doing super. And of course, the band are doing great, having a great year going into this year.
Thank you. Andrew?
Yeah. So some of my talking points there. Yeah, the students are back from Christmas break. They're just ready to go. Yeah, we have DECA, as he said, have a competition and many students moving on to the state level. That's great. Also, we just left, but Mr. Daley and I have been talking about the possibility of maybe getting solar panels on the campuses of Prairie View or Sand Lake elementaries. All because Riverland has a program with those kind of things. And that's about it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Anita, Jacob Zinski?
I wanted to thank the Empire Rejuvenation Group for the presentation they gave. It's just, it's, it's so interesting to hear, when you, when you hear they're having their meetings and they're working and it's, you know, a year, two years, putting all this together, but to see it and hear it from them. And to think when they left here tonight with our blessing and they go out and raise one point nine million dollars, just blows your mind. And they'll do it. So I wanted to thank them. Also, the wrestling being number one in the state, I usually don't report on sports here. It's usually your little niche. But that was, I was watching the news the other night and I did not know that we were actually that, really, were that good.
Oh, Anita.
I know, I know we're really good at everything, but I mean, number one in the state.
Yep.
Number one in the state. I know we're really up there, but number one in the whole state, that's really, that is really, really good.
And they just, they just, they took first place in that, the by-state tournament.
I know. That's.
The first time.
Sixty-some teams.
One of the wrestling coaches works in my school in West Salem and he's an awesome wrestling coach there. And so I was kind of keeping tabs on him and I was like, ooh, I don't want to bring that up. Holman is number one in the state, Josh Brewer. Anyhow, he's an awesome guy, but congratulations to Holman for that. So I wanted to also congratulate three retirees and Becky Forrester, having worked here for forty-two years.
Right.
That is unbelievable. She must have started when she was like eight. So young. She helped me when my kids were little at Evergreen, I think. Oh, my gosh. That is unbelievable. We are so lucky. These people stay here for so long and a bunch of treasures. And last but not least is congratulations to the Wind Ensemble students. And I don't know if anybody wants to road trip with me, but I would love to go up and see them. When we get back from the school board convention the night before, if anybody wants to ride up the following day, I would love to go and watch them. January twentieth in Eau Claire. So if anyone would like to go with, I know, that would be wonderful to watch. So I guess that's all I have.
Thank you. I would love to go with you, but I have a gymnastics meet that day. I have to do so, otherwise I would. Thank you, Kate, for helping out with the student achievement and learning committee. I was unable to go that evening. But I was invited to go to the Personnel and Governance Committee. But before I do that, since we had a little fundraising discussion tonight at the high school. school tonight, I just wanted to mention that the group is meeting to talk about the community center. And I have something that I will share with you after the meeting with each of you, but they are, what they're trying to do is reach out to individuals and ask individuals to make a one-year pledge, a small pledge, 25, 50, a hundred dollars, for three years, so that they can get an idea of what kind of operating costs they might be able to count on over a three-year time period. And they're asking folks to make a commitment, and then also to ask one other person to make this, a commitment to. It can be less, it can be more, just to ask them to make a commitment. So, I've got some pledge sheets that I'm gonna share with you, do with, as you will. Keep in mind that the community center is, they're hoping to have an intergenerational facility for young people and our elders. And keep, the other thing to keep in mind is, many of the young people they'll be serving are peop, are kids, there are kids that have no place to go after school right now. And we know statistics say that the time between 3:00 and 6:00 at night is when young people find the most trouble, because they don't have that positive place to go. And so, we're trying to, the community group is trying to provide a safe place to go, and they are working with other community organizations, they've reached out to the school district, continue to reach out, and have made revisions in their plans to accommodate and to adjust to some of the obstacles that they've come up against. And so, I would just ask you to consider that, and to remember that these are our kids, that they are looking to serve, for the most part, and maybe their grandparents. Then, I would like to talk about the Personnel and Governance Committee, and it's the next thing, it's 10.2 on the agenda. In your packet, in your folder this evening, you've got information, if you take a look at our school board policy on board committees, boy, that is pretty generic. And as, we had a conversation about it, you know, we, as a school board, we establish, it's really left up to the president to establish whatever committees they feel are appropriate. In the past few years, we have done what past practice has been, and we have followed the strategic initiatives, or the main focus areas, or whatever we're calling them, we keep changing the name, but there's the four basic things that we have been following. And there's an interest by that Personnel and Governance Committee to maybe be more specific within our policy, and then also to possibly have a conversation as a board about, do we need committees, period? Do we need these committees? Do we, is there something different that we could look at? I always talk about stakeholder involvement, that's one of our foundational beliefs that we have as an organization, and the committees are a way to do that, to get that stakeholder involvement, input, that kind of thing. But maybe there are different ways, so keeping an open mind to have that conversation. What I did ask was, and you have in your packet also, is what some of the like, school districts, similar size, similar enrollment are doing currently? And then I also asked for our, you know, our conference schools, what are they doing? And you'll see, I mean, Toma, look at the committees, they have 13 committees, holy moly. You know, I don't think we're at, we're looking to do that, but many of the schools have staff relations. Well, what is that? They have a policy, what is that? They have transportation, teaching and learning, finance. So, very similar to some of those policies that we have not formally established, but we are doing right now. So, please take a look at those, provide some input to the Personnel and Governance Committee, and they may come back and say they need even more board input and comments. I know that the administration would like to see some information, and it wouldn't be in the policy necessarily, but it might be more in the guidelines or the administrative rules, where the role of the board member is more outlined or described. Are they always the chair? Do you need to have a board member present in order for the committee to meet? And I know that's been an issue when we have committees of only one board member. Sometimes they, there are absentees, and people get sick, people, things come up. So, I think that's an issue. Who leads the committees? Who establishes the agendas? Those sorts of things. I think there is an interest from the administration to have some more of that outlined for them and for us, as we move forward as a board, and maybe having changing board members and those sorts of things. So, so that's, a long story short, is that we're gonna be talking about board committees. And this is a place to start. We also talked about maybe having a board workshop in the next quarter, again, where we come in, and maybe this is one topic, and I'm curious to hear from you, if this is a topic you'd like to address and have a conversation about at that board workshop. And, again, what's the role of the commit, or the board member, the, you know, they develop the agenda and those sorts of things? And I think administration would be really welcome to have some of that input as well. So, questions, comments, thoughts?
When you mentioned input, the committee, the committee would like input from us?
I think the Personnel and Governance would like.
Personnel and Governance?
Committee, yeah.
And the best way to do that would be an email to our Personnel and Governance?
It could be sharing your opinion right now.
Oh.
Two.
Okay.
Yeah. Or it could be, if you want more time to think about it, we could do it at the next board meeting, and just have a conversation about it.
Okay, well, yeah, I would probably wanna think about it more, but every board that I've been on, and I'm using the board as like a group, a top group, has always had committees under it. And, and the members of those, of the groups that I've been on take turns, and so, then it comes back as a good input, just knowing that it isn't necessarily in our, in our board committees that we're guiding the direction that things are going in, but I love having one or two of us there, so that when we have a board meeting, you've got questions even. You know, sometimes we, I don't even know what questions to ask on finance, or whatever else, or, or maybe something's pointed out. It also, maybe this is a selfish kind of thing, but it's a, it's a free in-service for board members. Think of board members who haven't been here, you know, new board members. To serve on a committee is a great learning opportunity, it's huge. And I'm, I've always been on, for the most part, the student achievement, I'm an ex teacher, but when you're a board member, that's different, that's really different. And so, the learning opportunity, I think, is critical. I like the questions that were brought up, you know, if a board member doesn't need to be there, do they or don't they? And I like, I do, just quickly, and then I'll be finished here, I do like a discussion of this, if we're having a workshop coming up, that would make sense.
Saw some heads nodding down here, too, so.
Well, I was just thinking, you know, as a, being on a committee, it's a learning experience, you know, being, like, for me, the finance committee, not something that's always been my expertise, but, 'cause I'm social work, you know, I'm the psych-social person, but, you know, I was drawn to the finance committee because I wanted to learn about it. And I had questions, 'cause budgets rule a lot of what we do, not everything, but a lot of what we do. And so, I ask a lot of questions. You know that, Jay. But, you know, so that's just the way my mind works, though, and so, I know, I know sometimes it can be really hard, when people are learning at different levels, different information, but I think it can be really helpful, like you said, Kate, for all of us, to be able to get that information, and, which seems like obvious to the people that do it every day, that maybe are, that's their job here in the administrative office, but it's like, for those of us that don't do that job every day and don't fully understand the budget process, it helps me to understand. So, when people ask me questions out in the community, I can fully support what we're doing here, and, 'cause I do, I just, people do ask questions that, I think if I can wrap my brain around it, I can explain it in a pretty simple way, that helps a lot out in the community. So, I just, I appreciate that, that committee experience, even though it takes more time, I think, for a lot of people to have to hash through what they've already done or already know. So, I really appreciate that.
Rebecca?
Yeah, I would actually like to see maybe a board workshop to discuss our roles on the committee, on committees, or even some type of committee orientation, information on our expectation, board's expectation of board's members' role on committees.
Yeah, 'cause it gets, it can get deep, because we're an elected body, and, you know, there are no legal ways for attendance and those kind of things, even on the board here. We know that we are much more effective when we fully attend, but there's not, you know, so what do you do then if we're not attending, and how effective can that committee be if they don't have that? I think initially, you know, the, again, we had one committee years ago that did all of the policies. Can you imagine what that, for one year? They did, they were the policy committee, and they reviewed all of the policies, and the thought was that, if you've got a committee focusing on buildings and grounds, wouldn't they be the best committee to evaluate policies related to buildings and grounds? Personnel and governance, the same, student achievement and learning, and finance, the same. And so, that's where, where they got split up. And we still, each of those four committees, have trouble sometimes getting through the policies we're supposed to get through for that year, that given year. So, that's kind of where it came from, and it also, a policy committee spent almost a year working on a policy, and then it came to the board and it was rejected. And the idea on board representation is to do that, is to represent the board on those committees, so that if you know they're working on a policy that you know is not gonna be received well by the full board, then the role of that board representative is to help guide them to, you know, to either what information, what more information does the board need so they are accepting of the direction that the committee is going, or to help steer that committee in a different direction that would be plausible or acceptable, you know, for the board. And so, what I'm, you know, again, good input, I don't know Anita or Gary, if you wanted to.
I was just gonna touch on, first of all, if a board member's absent, if you can still have a meeting. I know, like, I missed, I had hospice training one in November, and then I had a wake in December, so. I don't like to miss meetings, but I know that on the agenda, there are things that we do need to discuss. I feel like sometimes we've discussed things enough that you could forward them to the board. I guess it depends, really, on what it is, but it still would be coming to the board to be discussed as a whole board, so I would be all right with that. I know that a lot of the things that we discuss on the committee could probably be discussed in the district office with the powers that be in about a half hour, and you guys could get it all done, but the idea of a committee is to involve all of us, a couple of community members, and a board member, and those of us who don't understand all the time how everything works together, and to, to have our little piece of input, or to help us understand it, and to have, to have it work in our head, and to give you our thoughts, and, you know, try to make it plausible for the way we, we think it should work. So, although it probably does muddle your, slow things down to have to bring it to a committee and have all of our thoughts, and a meeting a month, and you could get it done a lot faster if it just involved the administration, I, I think it's really vital that we involve stakeholders and board members and, and administration, and people that do the numbers, and everyone else.
Okay, well, I think we'll continue that conversation about.
I agree with you.
Oh, thank you.
You do, with me? Can you say that into the microphone?
Did you?
I hate to say it, but I agree with Anita.
So, I think, but we will still probably maybe pursue some of those specifics, like the role of the board member, the adopting of the agendas and that whole process, maybe we'll do a workshop, and maybe we will combine it with something else. So, if you have ideas on anything else that you might want to do for an evening, discuss as a board for an evening, let us know, and maybe we'll get that put together this next quarter. Thank you very much. That, see, that's what we're supposed to do. That worked out really well, thank you. I would note that you received written reports from Buildings and Grounds, Salk, and Personnel P&amp;G Committee. Our meeting schedule, State Education Conference is next week already, it's hard to believe, the 22nd is our board meeting, and February 12th is our first February. Next item is verification and candidacy ballot order. So, Stacy has the three individuals' names that have completed the paperwork necessary to run for school board. Gary, do you wanna do the drawing, since Kate is, so the first person on the ballot will be?
Da-da-da-da-da.
It is.
Here. Anita.
Anita. Okay, the second person will be? And we do have three people running for two positions.
And this one is Barb Whitstein.
Barb Whitstein, okay, and then Kate would be the third, but we wanna have him open it and just verify that her name was in there.
This is killing me.
So do I.
And the winner is Kate.
It's me!
Okay, and so, then the only other thing is, you received a copy of the WASB resolutions. Who is our WASB, is it Lisa? And you are attending, right? And so, if you took a look at, I don't know, was it 70-page? I don't remember how many pages of the resolutions. If you took a look, what we do is, we just authorize our board rep to vote their conscience, how they feel the board would vote, because oftentimes, things come up at the meeting that may change how a board may look at something, so. With having said that, I would entertain, if there's nothing else to come before the board, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would so move.
Anita beat you, Kate, but I'll give you the second.
That sounds good.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried, we are adjourned.